Trustee Johannes, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of God.
Move to roll call.
Student trustee Massand?
Here.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Here.
Trustee Johannes?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez, trustee Quinlan? Does anybody see him on? I sent it to him and I texted him also, so I don't know what happened. I will send him the link, okay? I will work on that. Uh, trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Um, so we'll move on to the statement of cooperation, and I've asked trustee Napoleon Bellarise to read it for us.
So I'm reading the abbreviated version. "Over the course of the last two years, we, the PCCD Board, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we've conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to the agenda, but in summary, we've committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action."
Thank you, trustee. Uh, so, uh, report of action taken in closed session, is VP Quinlan on? Should we just move that to later? Oh, no action was taken. Okay, thank you. So no action was taken in closed session. So we'll move to approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to 3.7, approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. So move on to 3.8, associate student government reports. Do we have any, anybody with us to make those reports?
Hi, yes, College of Alameda.
Hey, welcome.
Hi. Um, just to give you guys a heads up, College of Alameda has been working on our welcome, welcome week, welcoming students back to the spring semester. Um, we're having a great turnout. Um, every day, we have a couple of more items that are coming on. Tomorrow, we have pancakes with the president, and Thursday, we will have our ASCOA breakfast that we're giving out pastries and coffee, and also having a, um, hariki afternoon. So we are in full swing for our spring semester. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other reports from those online? Student government reports? Thank you. So we'll move to our 3.9, the Peralta Classified Senate Report from President Gonzalez. Okay. I don't, I don't see him. So move to 3.10, District Academic Senate Report from President Goldstein.
Hey, folks, Matthew Goldstein, president of the District Academic Senate. Uh, before I get to the few brief remarks I prepared for tonight, I'd like to welcome our new permanent chancellor, Dr. Timiel Gilkerson. Um, as I've said up here before, DAS really looks forward to working with Dr. Gilkerson and collaborating to, um, improve Peralta operations and, uh, get the central office and the colleges in sync. And we, we understand that we face tough challenges in the days ahead, but we are up for the job and, uh, looking forward to the collaboration. Again, welcome Chancellor Gilkerson. So this evening, I have three short updates. Um, a check-in about a DAS resolution that went unanswered late last year, a report on Flex Day, which included a visit from the state chancellor, Sonia Christian, and a preview of what I hope will be the start of a big revamp of the budgeting and planning integration model, something that a number of us, both in administration and faculty and among students and staff, have been clamoring for, for, without exaggeration, years. So, uh, hopeful about that. So as some may recall, at the December 12th board meeting, I called our attention here to a November resolution from DAS that asked the district to add course sections for spring 2024 to meet what faculty analysis had demonstrated was clear student demand. Frustratingly, despite this in-person reminder and despite the administration and the board's obligation to follow the law, the resolution never got a formal response, and the recommendations went unheeded. Management isn't, of course, required to implement ideas suggested by the Senate. It is, however, obliged to explain why, um, it doesn't follow our suggestions. So I won't belabor the point tonight, but I want to make clear that DAS does expect the district to respect Senate's legal authority and going forward, both to follow the law and respect and duly consider recommendations that come out of the Senate's. Um, we do this, of course, to honor the law and the 10 plus 1, um, but also to, uh, be engaged in a process that will help us to better serve Peralta students and the community. So next, I wanted to underscore how grateful the Senate's are to state chancellor Sonia Christian, who came to Laney last week to explain her vision 2030 and to help welcome our new chancellor, Chancellor Gilkerson. Academic Senate leaders, as some of you know, uh, had chatted with Dr. Christian at the state plenary in the fall and had formally invited her to, to join us in the district. Happily, she accepted, and she, uh, joined faculty senate leaders for a pretty lively conversation in the Odell Johnson Theater to discuss Vision 2030 and Sacramento's plans for the, the system's future. I, I, I hasten to add that, um, the auspicious occasion, um, happened because faculty senate, academic senate leaders went in person to the state plenary in the fall where they were able to chat in person with the state chancellor, and that led to this invitation. So as we consider to figure out how to use district resources, I would argue that it's really important that we invest in faculty and that Sonia Christian's visit, which you might remember, included this really emphatic endorsement of presence and building relationships in person. It might be really useful to remember that as we assign resources to faculty and, uh, make sure that folks are involved in these statewide activities in person. Um, again, Chancellor Christian's visit, I think, was a, a nice reminder, a nice concrete reminder of the importance of, of presence and building these relationships. So finally, let me express my hope that, uh, thanks to strong interest and support from our new chancellor, our, our new local chancellor, we may at last be heading towards serious, a serious update of our shared governance structure. Uh, Chancellor Gilkerson has tasked our, um, academic and classified senate leaders with beginning to plan a PBIM retreat. I'll be meeting tomorrow with Roberto Gonzalez and DeSheta Henry and Stephanie Troker to begin discussing that long overdue project. We'll take it up to, at the big joint PGC, PBC meeting on Friday. Um, I'd also would like to mention that, uh, DAS vice president Wesley Blakie and I had the pleasure of meeting with our two student trustees virtually last week, Naomi Vasquez and Natasha Massand, who are here tonight. Um, and we were talking to them specifically about boosting student involvement in shared governance. They expressed great enthusiasm, enthusiasm for that prospect, and we look forward to working with them and their classmates in shared governance connections in the months and years ahead. So thanks so much for your time. Have a good meeting. And, uh, again, I appreciate your listening to me. Thanks.
Thank you, President Goldstein. With that, we'll move to 3.0. Oh. Yes, thank you. President Gonzalez, please proceed with your report.
Oh, thank you very much, Tom. My apologies for, uh, late the time. Escaped me. Um, okay. Well, good evening, Board President Gonzalez Brito. Um, let me actually move my... There we go. Am I still being heard? No, I am. I think I am. Okay. I will be up again. And, uh, good evening, Board President Gonzalez Brito, VP Quinlan, our trustees, Peralta employees, our students, community members, and a hearty welcome to President Chancellor Gilkerson. I'll begin tonight, uh, with a Senate report from President Hope Lane of Laney College. Um, Ms. Hope Lane, uh, begins with Laney College Classified Senate is pleased to welcome Chancellor Gilkerson in February for their listening sessions, the, the, uh, beginning perhaps of a, uh, series of listening sessions, sessions, um, where Classified will discuss and share concerns. In regards to the caring campus updates, um, which has been a regular report out from Laney, uh, is that Phase 1 of the signage has been installed to make navigating to the Eagle Village and the Art Center more accessible. Phase 2 is in progress and shall be completed, uh, by spring break. And due to popular demand, uh, additional ID badges were distributed during last week's, uh, flax. Um, two successful one-stop weekends, and despite the rains, uh, students came for services. The Renee Rivas, uh, birthday celebration and scholarship was held on January 18th, uh, which we've, um, been, yeah, that would have been his 65th birthday. The celebration was held at the, uh, Think Gay Grill in Oakland, where funds were raised for scholarships. The restaurant, uh, will donate 20% of funds, uh, for the remainder of, their funds for the remainder of, uh, January, uh, towards this ongoing scholarship. Uh, two students will be awarded in May, uh, $500 each.
My apologies, Mr. Gonzalez. Would you do me a favor and just speak up just a little bit more loudly, please? Our, our members here in the room can't really hear you very well.
Oh, sure, sure thing.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, and I apologize, um, my voice is actually kind of giving out a little bit. I have been a little sick. Uh, so moving forward, um, the scholarship for Renee Rivas, um, uh, this fundraiser will be held annually, uh, every third Thursday in January to coincide with Renee Rivas's birthday celebration. And that's the end of, um, the Laney, uh, college, uh, report. Um, and now to Chancellor Gilkerson, um, on behalf of the PCS, um, I would like to welcome you back to Peralta. Whether a blessing or a curse, there seems to be a trend of returns of Peraltaites, Peralta, Peraltaese, however we want to term it. But nevertheless, congratulations, and may our collective journey, uh, be profound and long-lasting. I want to, um, thank you. I want to thank you for your courage, your transparency, for sharing, sharing your story of how you came to Peralta, and for giving us insight into who you are as a person with a story. Uh, you made it very clear that we all have stories, even chancellors, and that drive, ambition, and hope persists in spite of and because of our stories. So thank you for sharing yours. I hope that, um, our marketing team will be able to, uh, share out, uh, the links for that amazing presentation, um, uh, to the community for those who are unable to attend. And in the spirit of transparency and for the purpose of starting off your relationship with the Classified Senate on good footing, I'd like to, um, clear the air from the beginning. In, in the event that you don't already know, you were not the highest-ranked candidate by staff in the context of the chancellor forums. There was one particular question that you kind of got a C minus on, and that was the question on, uh, your past experience and vision for professional development at, uh, Peralta, specific to, uh, classified professionals. Um, I don't think it would be, um, good to, uh, to review your, your answer, but to instead know that there is an expectation by staff for you to support professional development, um, that will be transformative, uh, transformative, not just for individual employees, but for Peralta's leadership for years and generations to come. We are a learning institution, and we must support and foster learning if we are truly to succeed, not just by our conventional students whom we serve, but for the potential in those learners who come to Peralta to collect a paycheck. And so while you weren't the first pick by staff in that exercise, that is less important to the end result. We were asked to weigh in with our perspectives, and we did that. But it was not our decision to make whether to hire you. It was our job to contribute to the process. Hiring, a process that is perhaps both a science and an art. For those of you who have served on hiring committees, I would venture to say that we've all been, at one time or another, fooled, or if not fooled, uh, compelled by peer pressure. I do believe there are more good intentions than bad when applying to a position. Those on the screening committees are tasked to use resumes, cover letters, and answers to scripted questions to essentially predict the future. Will this person succeed at the job? I think they might, or do they just have a great resume? And so while you may not have impressed some of us during the forums, uh, we had little data to go on. And yet, last Thursday, your story, your honesty, your passion, and your courage was infectious and, uh, already changed minds. I know that you reassured many that we can work together and make some amazing things happen for both our students and employees. Happy workers make for happy customers. And so the Senate looks forward to rolling up our sleeves to work alongside you and your team. Um, while you may not have impressed, uh, all of us during the forum, we had... I apologize. Yeah. And so the Senate does look forward... Oh, please, I have a technology glitch here. Uh, we had, um... Yeah. So, uh, like I said, happy workers... So like I said, happy workers make for happy employees. We look forward to rolling up our sleeves to work alongside you and your team to strengthen and to leverage participatory governance to support and expand our professional development efforts to support our students and to generate happiness for Peralta. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. We're going to move back to item 3.8 for an Associate Student Government Report from Berkeley City College.
Okay, hello, everyone. I'm so sorry for my lateness. Similar to Roberto, the time escaped me, but I'll keep this nice and short. So this week is BCC's first week of Spring 2024 instructions. So we're hosting a welcome week this week, filled with a lot of different foods and activities for every day of the week. So on Monday, we had a coffee and pastries for students in the morning, getting, you know, a good start to the week, a good energetic start to the week. Today, we got our boba offering at lunchtime today. So we had different varieties of boba flavors for students to be a little bit more refreshed. Tomorrow, we have a collaboration with our BCC Basic Needs Center to give out free lunches. And this happens every Wednesday. It will happen every Wednesday for the duration of the spring semester. So yeah, a great kind of opportunity for students to not have to spend any money outside on food. We all know how expensive it is. So yeah. We have that on Wednesday. On Thursday, we have our food pantry slash grocery distribution. So this is similar to the Wednesday one, but this is just free groceries for every student that needs it. You know, we see students from all walks of life at BCC, and sometimes just some free groceries are very, can go a long way, can put food on the table. Sorry. So yeah, another event happening on Thursday. BCC is hosting a Campus Resource Fair, which is basically an opportunity for students to learn about all of BCC's resources and departments, like the Veterans Resource Center, the Student Accessibilities Program, our Career and Transfer Center, our different learning communities. So all that is going to be at the Campus Resource Fair this Thursday. More into the future, we have an event on February 6th called Club Rush, where basically all of the, I believe, around 35-plus active clubs on campus come together in our atrium to kind of table to let students know what their mission, what their values are. So it's a great opportunity for students to learn about clubs and being more engaged on campus. So yeah, that's on February 6th. The Student Ambassador Team on campus, on the BCC campus, has been really focusing on getting students registered, enrolled, giving out campus tours to students, giving out guidance, handing out catalogs, answering phone calls, anything that students might need, especially in this very busy first week of the semester. So I'm glad that we have a very helpful Student Ambassador Team to help students kind of figure out all the campus nuances and whatnot. Our first HBCC meeting is this Thursday. So yeah, excited to, very excited to kick off the new academic year with some some similar faces from last semester. And today, or not today, sorry, this year, we're going to be focusing on a lot on civic engagement and sort of getting out the vote to our students as effectively as possible to register voters for upcoming elections. So we're currently working with BCC's Student Engagement Office and our Basic Needs Center just to work to sort of spread the vote out and get students more civically engaged on campus. So yeah, that's sort of it. Welcome week, collaborations, the Campus Resource Fair, Club Rush, the Ambassador Team, the Student Government Team. So yeah, very excited to kick off this new semester. And yeah, hopefully I can, you know, keep on updating you all about our success. But that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So we're going to move to Agenda Item 3.11, Public Communications on Matters That Are Not on the Agenda.
Board President, we have one public speaker, Jeff Sincere.
Hello. Good evening, board members, Chancellor, and everyone else here in attendance. I'm here to, you know, be at least from the PFT's perspective, to welcome everybody to a new semester. And I think maybe some might say a new start. I think that with even new leadership in the Chancellor position, I do want to make sure that the Board knows that there's still several, like, you know, very, you know, specific issues that like should be solved that will help like us in the classroom or faculty in the classroom, you know, do the best by our students. Obviously, the one that probably got the most publicity recently is that Mayor College elevators are shut down because they failed inspection. I think the Laney College elevators are still down at the tower, or in the tower at least. Faculty have consistent issues just getting into classrooms, probably faulty keyless entry systems or just not having enough keys, you know, which is another issue. Right now, if I'm not mistaken, the help desk, the first week of class, the help desk is down. That's the irony shouldn't be lost on anybody there. Enrollment continues to be an issue, specifically the district. You know, blaming a faculty for low enrollment, which has been pretty constant, and I get a lot of faculty that are really, really upset about this. And while we do feel like we get, like, you know, a lot of the blame put onto our shoulders, we also get a little upset when we get dismissed when we're trying to make the effort to identify and solve the problem along with you guys. Again, I think that, like, you know, I'm hopeful that these things, you know, kind of change, but this is what the, this is the mindset that our faculty are walking into all this with, even though a lot of faculty frankly are very, very hopeful about, you know, the future as it stands. I'd also like to say and probably repeat that amid all the cuts that were forced on faculty, classified staff, and by virtue of that, our students, after adjusting the budget, I'm troubled to report that actually, you know, and this is why I said last time I was up here, that the District Office was the only one that actually came out ahead with all the cuts. I know this has been mentioned by me, but it's also, you know, something that will continue to come up and we'll continue to talk about. My hope is that the current leadership from the Board, all the way down, will continue to think hard about the concentration of wealth in the District Office that's been mentioned in all the outside reports, including ACCJC reports as well as FICMAT. Yeah, I think we'll all hurt less if we stop doing the things the way that we've always been done, the way they've always been done. Like most faculty, I look forward to working with the District Administration and addressing and ultimately removing the obstacles that are before us. Thanks.
Thank you. No more public comments. Okay, so with that, we will move to 3.12, Chancellor's Reports.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez Brito. We'll start with our president's reports from our colleges, and I'm going to start first with Dr. Denise Richardson from Berkeley City College.
Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board President Gonzalez Brito, trustees, colleagues, students, and members of the community. I am pleased to report that the enrollment is on, that enrollment is on the rise at Berkeley City College. The Spring 2024 Enrollment Update as of today is that we have a 6,145 headcount. The same day in Spring 2023, it was 6,048. So that's progress. Class enrollment is 11,072. Same time in Spring 2023, it was 10,532. Our total FTS of resident and non-residents is 1,334. The same day in Spring 2023 was 1,280. So we're excited about this progress. Our productivity as of today is 14.34. So I'd like to thank the entire Berkeley City College team because it truly takes all of us to make this kind of progress. And other Berkeley City College news, I'm excited to share that Berkeley City College has four new doors. So, and just in time for the first day of school, the project started on December 14th, and it was completed on January 19th, which also happened to be my birthday. So it was a great birthday present, and we're just so excited that we're able to welcome our students through our brand-new doors. I'd like to thank the Kitchell Group, their Vice President of Administrative Services, VP Sean Brooks, and his team for doing an outstanding job getting that done. We are, in April of 2024, BCC will commemorate its 15th year. So we would like for you to stay tuned. We've got a lot of events planned, including a parade and lots of historical events that are going to be taking place during that month. To launch the celebration, we had a 1970s-themed party before the break, complete with bell bottoms, fringed vests, and a classic pair of silver platform shoes. So a good time was had by all. On behalf of Berkeley City College, I want to welcome our new Chancellor, Dr. Tamile Gilkerson. I'd also like to thank you so much for coming to our campus earlier this month with your team. It was a shot in the arm for all of us. We're excited about your leadership and look forward to working for you, with you in the coming years. That concludes my report for Berkeley City College.
Thank you so much, Dr. Richardson. Now we'll move to College of Alameda.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gonzalez Brito, trustees, Chancellor Gilkerson, colleagues, and students.
Mic, please.
Oh, mic, please. Okay. So. Should I start from the beginning, or are you able to hear me? All right. So, good evening, President Gonzalez Brito, trustees, Chancellor Gilkerson, colleagues, and students. The beginning of each semester is always joyful, especially for someone who has been a long-term faculty. Because as we get to welcome students, we also get to see them study hard and get a step closer to reaching their academic goal and going, completing their studies, and going in the world to make some great changes. This Spring Semester was special because before the semester started, we had Chancellor Gilkerson visit us and meeting with faculty, classified professionals, students, and administrators. It was a pleasant visit. We even got to give her a tour of the college, which was a little bit quiet because it was a week before the start of the semester. It was really exciting to see how the COA family members shared with the Chancellor the success on their ABCs, academic excellence, creating some innovative curriculum and programs, budgetary competency, being for a second year in a row with a balanced budget, and also community engagement, increasing our ties in our communities and partnering closely with nonprofit businesses, the Chamber, and all the Mayor Office and all community partners. Classified Professional Head opportunity to share with Chancellor Gilkerson that they created their first Classified Professional Development Committee, and we're going to have a huge celebration coming soon. And this was funded and supported by our IPI grant and led by our Classified Professionals, Juana Rollins and Luis Martírez. Also, the faculty had a chance to report about the great work done by the Enrollment Task Force, funded by the IPI grant. We were committed to look together at trends because the post-COVID enrollment always presents some challenges, and one set of eyes and one mind alone cannot solve it. We have to be on it together. So the Enrollment Task Force Committee worked during the winter break to provide some recommendations for administration and for each other and to see how can we support more students. This Fall/Spring Semester is starting much better than last spring. In fact, it's the best spring we have seen in the last three springs. And this is true for all for colleges, but I'll talk for College of Alameda. So we have 18% more students, spring to spring, and we have 19% more FTS. Still noted 100% of the target because we have more late-started classes starting that are ahead of us. So great welcome week at College of Alameda, and President Myers, ASCO's president, talked about what is happening every day. Today was test this Tuesday on the market, and also we had tables focusing on basic needs, C2C and workability, wellness center, and financial aid. And I wanted to talk a little bit about enrollment. This enrollment increase, it's a collective work, but I want to give special thanks to the District Marketing Team, Mark Johnson and everybody, Marcus Creos, FISA, and everybody in the Angel and everybody in the team. And special congratulations to Kathy Suma, who helped the College of Alameda in our specific advertisement campaign. So we are all over the community, being this in virtual community, Spotify streaming platform, the KRZZ FM Spanish Language Station, Google Ads, social media advertisement, Facebook, Instagram, AC Transit buses, Alameda posts. And it's really good to see the college out there in community. And also during this winter break, we met with AUSD leadership to see how we can have a summer breach program or probably build a summer schedule that will support our seniors. So thank you again. So a great way to start this spring and hopefully gets better from here.
Thank you so much, President Jami. Appreciate the report. Now we'll move to Laney College, Dr. Vesikov.
Good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board President Gonzalez Brito, members of the Governing Board, colleagues in education, and of course, our valued students and community members. I'd like to go ahead and start off with a point of personal privilege and just say welcome to my former president and our current Chancellor, Dr. Tamile Gilkerson. Look forward to serving with you again and appreciate everything. Things have been busy at Laney. We've had just an incredible welcome week so far. The rain doesn't stop us, and the great work continues. As I've reported in previous board reports, we've really had a great emphasis on health and mental wellness at Laney. And on the quad tomorrow from 11:30 to 1:30 PM, we will be conducting Wellness Wednesday, where there will be a lot of campus and community resources available to our students and the community. Thursday also emphasizes, it's called Thriving Thursday, as a lot of our community employment resources will have the spotlight of the quad again from 11:30 to 1:30, and certainly the public and our students are welcome to stop by. And then as the work of enrollment is always continuing on Friday, really, it's an opportunity to meet with a counselor, apply for financial aid, update ed plans, and do a lot of those things in registration that students can still do for the full term before the deadline of the 27th, the last day to add a class. So lots happening, but behind the scenes, this event takes place because of our student leadership, our Office of Campus Life, our Employment Services Center, our Wellness Center, and so many others. And it's just great to see when we come together. Just wanted to go ahead and check in as well with a brief enrollment report. We, you know, last, a year ago, we saw double-digit increases with our enrollments, and, you know, we've somehow managed to top that as well, despite a schedule that is 3% smaller than a year before. We're still seeing a 4% increase in our enrollments. What that means to, I guess, everyone would be approximately 300 more students and more than 600 more seats filled this semester on top of the great work we did last year. So I think that's great. One thing that's kind of was a challenge was one of our big events at Laney is One Stop Saturday, and over the last two Saturdays, I imagine some of you needed an umbrella. We did too. The public did turn out. They did sign up for classes, but just to really reinforce the idea that students can still register, we have done some additional for this week targeted social media and direct email messages, just reminding students that they can still register for classes. So the work certainly continues. I also would like to just express appreciation to the team at Laney. In addition to the great work with One Stop Saturday, we've had Ask Me tables that have been pivoting in the rain and greeting students as they come to campus and really kind of an all-hands-on-deck thing that's been happening. But also in the midst of preparing for the new semester, the team at Laney is particularly our custodians, and those as well in Food Services and Administrative Services took a lot of time and effort as well to welcome the district for District Flex Day. And it was a wonderful day because it was a day with two chancellors and not one, Dr. Gilkerson and of course, our State Chancellor, Dr. Christian. And I just really would like to express my appreciation to everyone at Laney and of course, as well, our district and college flex coordinators. Finally, as I always say, the work continues. Uh finally, uh as I as I always say, the work continues. Um we have such incredible community partners. And with the coming weekend, uh Laney College will be tabling and will be present uh in the Lunar New Year celebrations, uh both with the Oakland Chinatown Chamber of Commerce and also the one held by the Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce of Oakland. So lots of fun, great stuff ahead, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, President Besikov. And now Merritt College report, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, thank you. Uh good evening, uh President Gonzalez Brito, Chancellor Gilkerson, Board of Trustees, colleagues and community members. It's uh good to get back and get back to work and see everyone here. So you all have my board report um with you, in front of you hopefully, which highlights um our most recent uh community connection events. There was the youth exposure and accept access hub college fair that we held on January eleventh and the Why Go to College Forum, which was co-hosted with the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on January thirteenth. And both of those events brought more than two hundred young people to our campus. So those things are highlighted among a couple of other items in the board report. So I'd like to spend the few minutes that I do have tonight sharing some positive news in two areas. Our enrollment and the uh goings on with Beta Theta Lambda, which is our Phi Theta Kappa chapter. So first, let me just talk a little bit about the enrollment. Like my colleagues here, I am pleased to share that this semester we are making uh some tremendous progress. We are nearly back to our pre-pandemic enrollment levels by headcount. Uh we have uh late start classes that are left, as some people have mentioned. So I fully expect that we will surpass uh the ten thousand, twelve thousand uh headcount uh level by the end of the term. And maybe what's even more exciting than that, because the pandemic hit everyone hard, but at Merritt, we found that it affected uh African-American students probably disproportionately. Um sure, that was probably the case at some of the other campuses as well, but Laney did really well in that area, I remember. Um so even more exciting is that we've seen a twenty-seven percent increase in African-American student enrollment. So that's really, really uh important and exciting. So the recovery in that area is nearly complete. Overall, we have a seventeen point four percent increase year to year in FTES. And right now we are um leading the district, but it's not a competition, in target, FTES target. Uh and we're near nearly at ninety percent, but all of the colleges are doing really well in in that area. So once uh we do our late enrollments, our late start sections and stuff, uh I I anticipate that we're going to be uh we're all going to reach our target. So that's really exciting. I'm also happy to report that our Phi Theta Kappa chapter, which is Beta Theta Lambda, has been awarded five-star status. But for those of you don't, it sounds good, but for those of you don't know what five-star status is, it is um to get this recognition, a chapter has to achieve, achieve three major goals. The first is hosting at least two PTK regional meetings. You often ha- also have to host a regional annual planning meeting. And you also have to provide training to PTK members throughout the entire Western region. This is only the second time in our chapter's history that we have achieved this status. And if that weren't enough, two of our advisors, uh Director of Student Activities and Campus Life, Mr. Doris Hankins, and former faculty member Barbara Demopolis are currently under consideration for PTK Advisors of the Year. So wish them luck because they deserve that award. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you so much, President Johnson. I, we have fantastic college presidents. Thank you so much for the informative um reports and the hard work by your teams. It's an honor and a privilege um to serve alongside you in uh leading this district forward. So I'm really, really grateful for the informative reports tonight. Um Board President uh Gonzalez Brito, trustees, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to return to Peralta as your chancellor. Uh I am deeply humbled and honored um to step into this role. And I'm through and really enthusiastic about contributing my skills and passion to the district community. Working alongside you and the entire Peralta community to ensure our district's success is a responsibility I embrace with a sense of purpose and dedication. I'm genuinely grateful for the chance to serve and will endeavor to strengthen everyone's confidence in me. For those who lack some confidence in me, I endeavor to strengthen your confidence in me. I was privileged and I want to go ahead and show um my report, please, online. As some of the presidents shared, I was privileged to visit each uh college campus accompanied by Sasha Amiri and Teshetta Henry. And the gracious hosts of the college presidents facilitated introductions to their teams. Next slide showcased highlights and provided insightful tours of the of their facilities. Mark Johnson and his team, Marcus Creel and FISA Ali, also documented these visits um through pictures and videos. And we'll get to see some of that tonight. Each campus was unique. I love this. Uh you know, I've been on college, a college president at multiple places. There is something really special about having unique institutions that make up the fabric of this district. And so it was really an important opportunity for me to get to connect and also see each college president's distinct approaches. My first visit was to Berkeley City College and again want to just thank um Dr. Denise Richardson and her entire team for being so welcoming. And some of the highlights that I heard there that were super exciting was again the excitement about BCC's educational master plan and that completion in twenty three, two thousand and twenty-three with a focus on closing equity gaps, increasing enrollment, which you heard about tonight, and improving completion rates. Really grateful for that laser focus. And then also excited to hear about their successful partnership with the California Institute of Regenerative Medicine, which provides students with paid internships at genetic research labs focusing on stem cell therapies. Uh you know, I just like want to stay at every place to learn more about each thing. It, you know, she, we concluded with a tour and I got to see classified professionals and faculty members as a walking the hall and other administrators. And I got to chat with student trustee Natasha Massan, who I was overjoyed to see you in the lobby, it worked with Kismet. I had the opportunity to spend time at a Community College League Conference with trustee Massan. And so it was really great to be reconnected with you again, and I look forward to working with you and student trustee Vasquez on um working to include student, centering student voices in the work as we um continue together. On Thursday, the next day, I had the opportunity to go back to Laney College and visit. It was sort of like a homecoming in many ways, and I really want to thank Dr. Besikov and the team that went out of their way to give me a warm welcome back and included um hearty breakfast and a heartier discussion about the state of Laney. Um and really some exciting things happening there. Again, highlights on the SOAR program, helping students with onboarding assistance and retention, the the growth of the Welcome Center and that laser new focus. And certainly the work they continue to do to serve the community with a hundred and seventy-two thousand meals, free meals served, forty thousand free boxes of fresh vegetables and thirty thousand free pantry packages, including uh groceries and dairy meats and things going on. I was thrilled to see again that laser focus and led on the tour by um participatory governance leaders, Dr. Leslie Blackie, our the Faculty Senate President and Hope Lane, the Classified Senate President. So thank you to the Laney team as well. On that Friday, I got to visit College of Alameda and Dr. Ramy and her senior leadership team were so incredible. They gave me such a thorough review of really in introducing me to the College of Alameda. And I, I mean, I was so interested that COA is one of the biggest feeders to UC Santa Cruz and really learning more about the number of students. Eighty-five percent of the College of Alameda students are um receiving financial aid. Um and over a hundred students received CTE degrees or certificates last year. Um and so it was very exciting to see that laser focus on the ABCs. I had the opportunity, Dr. Ramy opened the work and invited a lot of leadership across the campus. And it included the Faculty Senate, I'm sorry, it included, I apologize. Um. So. Um it included faculty and classified leaders, as well as the Associated Student President, who we heard from tonight, Natae Myers, telling us about the great things happening at um College of Alameda. And I loved what Natae said, COA is my home, we're family here. And then finally, I got the chance to go up the hill and visit, up the hill and visit Dr. David Johnson and the team at Merritt College. And it was a really a beautiful opportunity to sit together and really hear more about the history uh and um how folks feel about serving in there. The discussion focused on the important history of Merritt College, how they um in in regards to social justice, the legacy, the student pantries and the work that they're doing to engage stakeholders. And I loved the adoption of the school mascot, the Merritt College Panthers, and appreciated the warm welcome. Um Faculty Senate President, Academic Senate President, Dr. Tom Renbarger, and classified a Senate President, Marisol Rok, who noted she is a proud alumna of Merritt and the Peralta Colleges. And then we had an animated conversation about the need to bring students back to campus. So I want to thank each of the college presidents for their incredible support of um welcoming me and the team to your colleges. Next slide. You've heard a little bit from the college presidents about our flex days that happened. And I'm proud to say that we had an incredible district uh flex day. And I really want to first of all thank our district flex coordinators, uh Chelsea Cohen, Marla Leach, um and Natasha Spivey, supported by Tina Vasconcellos um in the work that did do did to create an outstanding program. And you could see some pictures there from the visits. We heard again from um President Goldstein about um the honor we had to have State Chancellor Sonia Christian visit us, who talked positively about Peralta and our progress, how proud she was, and she provided that overview of the Vision twenty thirty and did a general Q and A with our Senate presidents. And I want to say that I was so pleased to see the collaboration, not only with our college presidents, but with our Classified Senate leadership and our Student Senate leadership, but to see our Academic Senate leaders collaborating together to bring this incredible conversation to um our institution. So I want to just thank, uh and then we had incredible dance performance by the College of Alameda dancers. And so you can see some highlights there. I had the opportunity um to share, as you heard tonight, um some remarks. And I wanted to just actually share a video that was produced by um by our incredible marketing team. And just to say, uh this is my hope for our community. This was the end of my flex speech and I felt like it was um a way to again um reinforce to you all um how humbled I'm honored I am to work alongside you and um what we can do together with passion, purpose and possibilities. And as we close out, I wanted to just um say that none of these things happen um alone, right? This is a team effort. So Flex Day was not only coordinated by folks, but it was also a team effort by the Laney Facilities Team, a team of folks behind the scenes from Peralta TV, um techs from um Merritt College and all of the colleges came together to support being able to do a high flex, Flex Day to produce things like this. And so I'm really grateful uh to the food service from Laney College as well. So I want to thank the classified professionals, um the administrators, the faculty members um and the students who all came together to create a really great opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Okay, um with that, we'll move to our consent calendar.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we're moving right along. Famous last words. So we'll go to go to action items. Um and uh nine point one, I believe nine point one and nine point two were removed from consent uh by the request of a trustee. So we'll start with nine point one.
Um I'd like to move approval of nine point one and nine point two together.
Second.
We'll go to roll. Oh, is there discussion? I forgot about discussion. I'm just moving right along. Any discussion on nine point one or nine point two?
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Abstain.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item nine point three, district-wide consider adoption of resolution. Those numbers authorizing participation in the state of California's Next Generation nine-one-one alert and warning system.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
My apologies. Who was the first motion?
Thank you.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And with that, we'll move to uh item nine point four. And with that, we'll move to item nine point four.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
And for the public, this is a district-wide contract with Marina Security.
Is there any discussion? I had a question related to the amounts. I noticed that it's the amount, approved amount is 551,000 and some change, and wondering how that relates to, for 28 days, and how that relates to the overall annual contract, which was for 5 million. It seems high, but wonder if somebody can address that.
Thank you, Chancellor. I'm going to turn over to interim vice chancellor, Atheria Smith. Thank you.
No.
Thank you. Good evening, trustee, and let me address your question. We are still in negotiation with Marina Security. The five five one number that you're looking at, that is the monthly estimated cost for Marina Security to bill against. Now, you had asked about the entire 5 million. The contract that was originally set forth was 6.1. Then also, we looked at a 6.3, and we've also looked at a 5.9. So the chancellor has asked to meet with Marina Security, and we are in additional negotiations with Marina Security to make sure that we get the things that we need to keep our district safe and also at the best price in terms of the service that we will get from Marina Security. So that is why you see this estimated cost for the monthly cost of, from Marina Security.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, that is all our action items for today. So we'll move on to trustee reports, and I'll start to my left.
Yes, I would like to, first of all, add to the congratulations for Chancellor Gilkerson. I had a wonderful time meeting you at those events, and I'm really looking forward to working with you. So I first want to mention that I've been continuing to regularly attend student trustee advisory committee meetings. The last one in December, I learned a lot about like resolutions, the resolution submission process for SSC and that was helpful. Dr. Goldstein mentioned this, but I was, I also wanted to say that student trustee Vasquez and I met with the DAS president. Again, we discussed how we could further get involved in participatory governance, and we're working on organizing student leaders to get involved in that as well. Yeah, that was my report.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Chancellor. We are so excited to what, to what is in store for you and the district. Today, I was able to table at the Laney Quad and inform students about the shared governance committees that we learned about in the meeting with Dr. Goldstein to soon hopefully increase student participation in district-wide PBIM advisory committees. I will continue to help in the Welcome Week event at the four colleges to talk with students, and student trustee Massand and I will have office hours to improve student communication. Thank you.
So a big welcome to Chancellor Gilkerson. It's a pleasure to have you here. Heard such great things about you, so I'm so excited to be able to work with you closely. I am headed to CCLC this weekend, the Cali, oh my God, CCLC, Community College League of California, where they're having their Sacramento Legislative Lobby Conference. So I'll be there, I think, with a few of you. And then the week after that, we're also heading to ACCT, which is in Washington DC, another lobbying conference. One of my priorities, as I've shared with President Gonzalez Brito and the chancellor, is to really explore how we can lobby for more money to be given to our district and using my vast political network in order to do that. So I'm going to get as much training as I can right now and follow those issues as much as I can throughout the year. So it's my number one priority, at least as we go into 2024, knowing what we know about our budget to prevent future cuts. If we have money, we don't have to cut. So that is the way I look at it. And that's my report for tonight.
All right, my report is quite similar to trustee Delphine Polk's report. Welcome. As we all said, I am not going to the conference this weekend, but I am going to the one in Washington DC, the ACCT. Ditto, 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 everything she just, she just said. All right, yeah, thank you.
I was really excited to be at the District Flex Day at Laney College. The excitement in the room was inspiring, and the presentations were inspiring. I was particularly excited to get an opportunity to see our new chancellor in action and not really focus that much on what are problems we have, but what are the possibilities? And just to really not only begin building a relationship with people in the district, but help people build relationships with each other. We've got a lot of work to do, and it's going to take goodwill and honesty and a lot of courage. And I think that we have that in abundance in this new chancellor we have. So welcome. I'm really pleased you're here. Thank you.
I will absolutely echo that. We are so excited. The board is so excited to have you here. And listening, I was physically present for Chancellor Christian's keynote presentation, but I was, but I listened to yours over Zoom, and I have to say that I don't think I knew those stories, so thank you for sharing. You were, for many of the board members, our first choice, and we are really excited about what you're going to do. And I think there's going to be a lot of generosity spirit that's needed from everybody at this district in terms of what's to come. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but this is just over decades of, you fill in the blank, that, that's kind of created infrastructural problems. And we already know that you know what those problems are, and you're beginning to kind of put your arms around it. And we're going to need some patience from everybody. You're going to need some patience from everybody because there's a lot to do. But there's potential. Sonia was really excited about you. Sonia was really excited about what Peralta has been doing, what the faculty have been doing, about what the administrators have been doing. So this is, this is a new leaf. This is a new transition. And what's to come is going to be really wonderful to experience. And I'm glad I'm here through this transition. So welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Quinlan?
Yes, I would also like to extend the welcome to Chancellor Gilkerson. I saw your presentation on Zoom, and mainly what I got out of it is it's time for hope and it's time for hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome again, Dr. Gilkerson. I will be at the CCLC conference as well as the Legislative Lobby Day this coming weekend, so I look forward to that. And like my colleagues, look forward to discussions or pushing on, on, on the money issue. The chancellor, the chancellor, the governor has put forth a budget that sees no cuts for community colleges, but it's been reported that that's going to be a hard fight through the May revise. And so look forward to that, to those meetings this weekend and on Monday. And with that, we'd like to close the meeting in, and trustee Whitrow is not.
Point of order, Board President, trustee VP Quinlan has announcements for tonight.
Oh, VP Quinlan, announcements.
Sorry, Sasha, where did you send those?
I just sent you the email about five minutes ago.
Okay. So the announcements for January 23rd, 2024. Number one, welcome back, students and faculty. The spring semester began yesterday, but it's not too late to enroll. Spring is free for California residents to apply for financial aid and take six credits or more. Visit www.peralta.edu, enroll to start the enrollment process. Item two, Welcome Week activities for students are happening at each of the colleges. Please visit the college website for event details. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President Quinlan. With that, we'd like to close the meeting today in memoriam. Before we conclude our meeting, we would like to honor the memory of two recently departed Peralta community members. First, we pay tribute to Officer Twan Lee, an Oakland police officer who tragically lost his life while responding to a Berkeley call in the early hours of December 29th. Officer Lee, a Peralta alum, was deeply cherished and respected by his colleagues. Just like many of our students, he pursued his education at multiple colleges within our district. From 2004 to 2009, he attended the College of Alameda for general education classes. And later in 2019, he embarked on his journey at the Police Academy through Merritt College, successfully graduating from the 183rd Police Academy in February 2020. Additionally, we honor the memory of Dr. Doug, of Mr. Douglas Banks, who peacefully passed away on January 10th after dedicating nearly 30 years to the Peralta community. His journey began in 1995 as a parking lot attendant for Peralta Police, and later he became an integral part of Laney Library as a library technician, too. Douglas served as the evening lead of the, at the loan desk, providing a vast array of circulation services and technical assistance to students. Beyond his professional contributions, Douglas was known for his kindness, intelligence, humor, and the boundless creativity of a true artist in free spirit. His absence leaves a void that will be deeply felt by all who know him. Our heartfelt condolences, condolences extend to the families and loved ones of Officer Lee and Mr. Banks during this challenging time. In honor of their lives and contributions, let us now observe a moment of silence as we adjourn this meeting. Thank you, and we are adjourned.